Welcome and good evening. Thank you to everyone in attendance in our Ken Sanchez chambers this evening. I call this May 24th, 22 Administrative Meeting of the Bernalillo County Commission to Order. Commissioner Quesada and Commissioner O'Malley are excused from tonight's meeting. We will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair Benson.
Actually, we'll take a moment right now also. I was made aware earlier that there was a mass shooting at a elementary school in Texas earlier today with around 14 or 15 dead. So please, please take this moment to also think about those families and lift them up in prayer. Thank you. Thank you. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Benson. And I'm excited that we have Acting County Manager Lisa Setiowei. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Madam Chair, there are no staff requested changes or additions to the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And we will move straight into proclamations. And I am so excited to be sponsoring this proclamation to honor the 35th anniversary of Festival Flamenco. And we're so honored to have Dr. Eva Encinas and her whole crew in. They're actually going to do a bit of a performance. TSO, yeah, or second. Either or. You tell me. Okay. You are welcome. Yes, let's hear your performance and then I'll read out the proclamation. Thank you. So wonderful. Thank you. Thank you all for making it out here and blessing us with that beautiful performance. Very much appreciated. And again, I'm so honored to have both Eva and Marisol Encinas present here with us today. I'm going to read out this proclamation and then definitely give you all time to speak. Acknowledgment, the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge Festival Flamenco Abu Querque, acknowledging the National Institute of Flamenco is located in Bernalillo County, was founded in 1982 by flamenco artist and University of New Mexico professor Emercia Eva Encinas, and acknowledging Encinas has dedicated her life to making Abu Querque a center for flamenco, and acknowledging the Encinas family is one of the true flamenco families in the United States. Encinas's grandmother, Juanita Lopez, was a rezadora. Encinas's mother, flamenco dancer Clarita Garcia de Aranda, ran a dance studio on the corner of Edith and Candelaria in Abu Querque. And acknowledging in 1976, Encinas was asked to teach a course in flamenco at UNM. Encinas began a 43-year career at UNM in which she spearheaded the development of the Flamenco concentration. And acknowledging in 1987, Eva Encinas founded Festival Flamenco Abu Querque, and acknowledging over the years, the festival has evolved to become the largest flamenco festival in the United States. And acknowledging that this June 11 through 18, the institute will present the 35th Annual Festival Flamenco Abu Querque. And acknowledging Festival Flamenco Abu Querque will feature 16 main stage performances, late-night theater, the tablao performances, 32 workshops, two pre-performance lectures, a free flamenco New Mexico lecture series, Flamenco Kids Camp and Festival Juvene. These activities will result in an estimated 3 million-plus in direct economic impact on Bernalillo County. And acknowledging Bernalillo County sponsorship enabled the institute to expand free festival programming in 2022, including six free performances in each county district, 46 free flamenco music and dance classes offered to county youth and seniors in community centers throughout the county from June 6th to July 22nd, 2022. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners honors the National Institute of Flamenco for its dedication and presentation of the flamenco arts and recognizes the Festival Flamenco Abu Querque as the premier flamenco event in Bernalillo County and the United States. Done this 24th day of May 2022 in Bernalillo County, state of New Mexico. Presented this day, May 24th, by the Board of Commissioners. Thank you so much. That's not on.
Is this on?
There it is.
Yeah, I just have to get a little closer. It's an honor to be in this partnership with Bernalillo County, to be able to expand our programming. It's hard to believe that we're celebrating 35 years this year. But I'm very, very proud of the work that the institute has done over the years. And just thank you so much for this proclamation and for inviting us to do our little presentation here. So flamenco, thank you, Carlos and Maddie and Vicente and Eloy for coming and sharing their talents here. And we're just honored to be able to teach in these community centers and do our work with continuing to spread this very important treasure that we have here in New Mexico. And we will certainly do it to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just wanted to say too, both Commissioner Benson and I were talking before that we took classes at UNM a while back with Eva. And we both agreed that they were really hard. But rigor makes excellence. And I'm just so thankful for the beautiful, these are new chambers. So thank you for blessing us with this today and blessing these new chambers. And just so honored, again, I've been working with Marisol to get to the community centers. And as soon as our, I feel like this isn't just about the arts and about the beauty that you all create, but it is about crime reduction and bringing preventive measures to bring beautiful things to our communities so that they can thrive and feel like they have something beautiful to look forward to. So thank you very much.
I want to chime in also and pile on to what Madam Chair said. You all, your family and extended family and friends have done so much for our community. And we were blessed to be part of it years ago. And yes, I discovered that I have no rhythm, thanks to you. But keep it up, keep carrying the fire. And thank you so much for what you do for Bernalillo County.
Thank you.
And the world. I know several students that were in those classes that have taken flamenco outside of New Mexico. So it's amazing. It's amazing work.
I could keep talking, but we went to a couple of the community centers together. And one of the workers of the community center was like, please, please bring it here. My daughter comes here. So our communities are desperate for it. And just thank you, thank you for sharing your talents and gifts. And I'd be remiss to not recognize my homeboy Vicente.
Thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to be able to share in all of the, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much for, Bernalillo County, for giving us an opportunity to be able to share free programming in all of the five districts. We're very excited about all of the classes and performances that we're going to be able to present.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we will move, exciting times. We will move to public comment. Julianne, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Madam Chair, we have six signed up.
Wonderful. To folks, sign up for public comment, you will have two minutes to speak. You will be given a 30-second notice to wrap up your comment and a final notice when your time is up. When your name is called, please make your way down to the podium and state your name for the record before you begin your comments. Thank you. Julianne, please call up the first speaker.
Mr. Don Schrader, Serena Olgin, and Joshua James.
Don Schrader. The Bible has many verses supporting slavery. Sadly, the Bible never says all slavery is evil. The Bible has many verses saying God says, the Bible has many verses saying God commanded mass murder in war. Sadly, the Bible never says all war is evil. The Bible says Jesus promised your heavenly Father will give good gifts to those who ask. Millions of people for thousands of years have prayed desperately for help from war, starvation, family violence, torture, rape. Millions of people for thousands of years have prayed desperately for help from sickness, slavery, fires, tornadoes, floods, hurricanes, earthquakes. Millions who prayed received no help. Now, don't get me wrong. The Bible has some precious wisdom. But because the Bible never once damns all slavery, the Bible never once damns all war, the Bible lies saying God will help those who pray and believe. The Bible is not a good book. The Bible is not a holy book. I was a young, very sincere Christian preacher 56 years ago in Virginia and later Illinois. I apologize for spreading false advertising for God. I thank many people who helped me on my very long journey away from addiction to religion.
Serena Olgin, Joshua James, Matthew Cordova.
Good evening. My name is Serena Olgin. And I wanted to bring up a few things that are near and dear to my heart. In reference to the forced vaccinations as well as mask mandates, not only for our children in the public school system, but for us in the community as we the people. As far as being able to speak publicly at these meetings and not being able to be given religious freedom to not obtain the vaccination. So as far as being able to speak, being part of the community and working with people within the community, whether it's the public school systems or within the county commissioner meetings, not being able to have a voice has been very, very frustrating for many people, including myself and other people in the community that I represent. Working in healthcare also states too that people who have got the coronavirus are even more likely to have higher immunity based off of an experimental vaccination. So the reason I'm here this evening is to speak upon that and to state that there does need to be religious freedom from the vaccine requirement within all federal buildings, Bernalillo County, the city, that everybody should have that freedom of choice and that we should all be able to, at the end of the day, be able to speak as we the people. So that's why I'm here this evening to, you know, explain that, you know, it's not up to the government or the county commissioner's office, but it's each individual person's personal, private decision on what they're going to do medically for themselves and for their children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Serena Olgin, Serena Olgin, for your comments.
Joshua James, Matthew Cordova, Catherine Bopri, and Carlos Profit.
Hello, I am Joshua James and I am running for Bernalillo County Constitutional Sheriff. And I am here to talk about the election audit of 2020. The people have made the demands to audit the elections of 2020 and nobody is listening. You like to tell the people that we had the safest and most secure election in all the country. Yet we know for fact that New Mexico is ranked third in election fraud in this country. We know for fact that Dominion Voting spent more money on Dominion voting machines here in New Mexico than anywhere else in the country. We have just a little over 2 million people in the whole state, yet we spent more money on Dominion voting machines. At some point, it is going to come down that the election was rigged. And you will all be complicit in the crime of not doing the forensic audit. The commissioners and the county clerk, you have a duty to the Constitution to ensure that our election is safe and secure. Whenever I come in as Bernalillo County Sheriff, I will come back on the 2020 elections. And we will also do an instant audit of the 2022 elections. So I ask you all to find it in your hearts to run the forensic audit. If anything, you're going to shut us up. But otherwise, it'll be remembered that you took the initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joshua James.
Matthew Cordova, Catherine Bopri, Carlos Profit.
Hello, good evening. My name is Matthew Cordova. I am a New Mexico resident. I've lived here my whole life. My family for generations have lived here. I come here tonight to talk about forensic audits and the election. Already, we're seeing another trend this year in Pennsylvania where they're taking a long time to count the ballots. I want to make sure that here in my state, that if that happens again in 2022 in our election, that our commission is going to do something and make sure that we have a forensic audit or just an audit of the votes to make sure that we're up on everything and everything seems legit. So that's all I'm here for. I don't want to take up too much time. So I hope you all have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine?
Hello, my name is Catherine Bopri. I just want to say that I support what's being said about the vaccines being voluntary and that we should have the right to decline based on our own personal beliefs, religion or not. We shouldn't have to claim a religion to be able to say, I have a conscientious objection. Fully support that. I also support the audit and accountability and verifiability of these machines. I've been in a position where I've seen it flip when you put the thing in. And to me, that screams fraud. And the other issue I'd like to say is I think it's time to lift the healthcare mask mandate. That's my daughter back there. We are in healthcare facilities frequently. Once you close the door, everyone takes them off. It's a waste. It's a sham. It's a facade. They're not really following the rules. They're just doing it because they're being told. So I think it's time to lift that and let people who want to wear them, wear them, but not require it because nobody's really following it. It's almost like a joke. So I think it's time to just let everyone decide on their own what they want to do instead of requiring everyone to wear a mask in healthcare settings. We're all going to the other places afterwards. I think it's time and I think everyone should be in support of that. Do what you want. And in the governor's orders anyway, there was freedom to or not to if you were advised not to. But in healthcare facility, that doesn't seem to be the case and it should be. So that's all I have to say on that. And if you agree, clap, applause or something.
Thank you, Catherine Bopri.
Carlos Profit?
Good evening, Chair Baraboa. My name's Carlos Profit, 36-year resident of the Pajarito Mesa, Pajarito Grant. 22 years ago, I found out we weren't on the first responders map and have been trying to find a language where the residents, Burnco, the other agencies, state police, FBI, Brandon Livestock Board, a way to describe the area. Imagine how much better the outcomes could be if we had a way to describe the area and if, for instance, BCSO knew where they were or had some comprehension of what we were trying to describe to them. Enrico Gravi said to me in 2016, he said, we don't pay enough for law enforcement. And I asked him, well, what would that figure be, Enrico? And he wouldn't give me a number. That's extortion. And I've heard every kind of tonteria from government that you can imagine. And it's priceless. I enjoy it. I wish I'd written it all down. But it's criminal. It causes undue suffering. It's cutting off your nose to spite your face. I suspect they're just trying to drive the value of the real estate down before somebody makes a move on it. Questions, doubts, commentary?
I just want to say thank you for bringing your voice and issue. I was unaware and I will definitely follow up. And for anyone here, I could be reached at district3@burnco.gov if you want to follow up.
When I email, I email about 40 people. A whole lot of people are on the loop. Just, there's a, light the trail. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment. I don't have, did you sign up by five? It's up to you.
Yes, go ahead and come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here today because I want for all negative control to cease to exist. Negative control on the people, on the land.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Please.
State your name for the record.
Cat. On the people, the plants, the animals, the mineral kingdom. The people are a focus right now. I want to support everything that the people who have spoken before me have said, Don Schrader, Serena, Matthew Cordova, Catherine, Joshua James, and the other two. There's a lot of negative control that came with the COVID measures. We will not accept that anymore. You must stop the coercion. Coercion is a crime. The digital ID efforts that are in the making to grant access to only people in regards to their medical status and to have a very certain blockchain-based ID system, you may not proceed with that because it will harm the people. I'm seeing surveillance cameras have gone up in the last two years everywhere. Not acceptable. Take them down. Our pictures are ours. Our biometric data is ours. Our fingerprints are ours. How dare you? Toxic herbicides, pesticides being sprayed. I had a garden humming and buzzing with life and it was wiped out overnight. And they have not recovered. The bee population is at the brink. You must stop spraying all city, county. You must spray anything toxic onto the land and for it to go in, you must stop. Harmful radiation, 5G. Why is it, I want a special investigation. Why is it that I'm feeling sick every time I'm using my phone and my computer? And I have to have it off all the time. I don't even have access anymore. I want a special investigation of why my technology radiates me so much that I am sick if I'm using it.
Thank you for your comments.
It needs to end.
Thank you. That's okay, Officer. Thank you for your comments and thank you all for bringing your voices to public spaces. So important.
Oh, and the election, of course, needs to be fair.
Thank you. We are moving on. Thank you for public comment. We're moving on to item number six on the agenda, appointments to advisory boards and committees. We have a joint air quality board at-large appointment sponsored by Commissioner Piscotti. Go ahead, Ms. Piscotti.
Thank you very much. I would like to move for approval the reappointment of Judy Kelman, representing the at-large position to the Joint Air Quality Control Board. Judy Kelman is an amazing person. She's an environmental attorney. And she is at home right now watching us on the live stream, taking care of her little twins who are very cute. I think normally if there's two twins born, they split the cuteness 50/50. But in her case, they each got 100%. So I move for approval for Judy Kelman's reappointment. Do I have a second?
Yes. Vice Chair seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposition in here? Thank you and welcome Judy Kelman, or welcome back Judy Kelman. And we move to the next, Sheriff's Office Advisory and Review Board. Again, Commissioner Piscotti has a wonderful appointment. Ms. Elena Giachi?
Yeah, Elena Giachi, if you could come to the podium. I am so happy to sponsor you for appointment to this position on the SORB. You had indicated interest in it a month or so ago. And it just so happened that an at-large position opened up. A founding member, Diane Dosell, had resigned. And so I immediately snapped up that space for you. And so I guess I'd like to hear a little bit. And so I guess I'd like to hear a little bit from you about what you bring to the board. I read your bio and I was really amazed by it because I'm amazed by all of our board members on the SORB because everybody brings a different perspective and a different voice. And you certainly bring a unique voice and background and experience to the Sheriff's Office Advisory and Review Board. So I think that I would like to get the technicalities out of the way and if it's okay, may I move for approval?
Second, enthusiastically second. If we, any, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And yeah, if you could just take a couple of minutes and tell us what you bring to the board.
You know, I paid attention to the last three months of the board just to see if I was going to be able to bring anything to that board. And it's a pretty impressive board already. And so in 1989, I ended up doing my very first volunteer as far as a rape crisis advocate. And ever since then, for the last 32 years, I've been doing both sexual assault, domestic violence and child sexual abuse work. I have had the privilege of serving as a, with the National Sacred Circle. I have had the privilege of being an executive director of the Coalition to Stop Violence Against Native Women, as I am Dinae and from Tachitni and Toria Chitni Basashi. I am honored to be able to represent the Sexual Assault Task Force under Mayor Chavez and then the Sexual Assault Domestic Violence Task Force under Mayor Chavez and then the Sexual Assault Task Force under Mayor Berry during his whole term. And then briefly with the Domestic Violence Task Force that Mayor Keller put together. So over the last 20-some years, I've done task force and been very honored to work with the Albuquerque Police Department where we put together English as a Second Language with, prior to any kind of demands that they do certain things, that this task force put together with the cooperation, a pretty impressive of English as a Second Language, which is often recognized as a model nationally as well for the work that we have done there. I just finished a research project with a number of very impressive people again and it's, it just published with the Journal of Women's Health. So we're really happy about that. It talks about the reproductive coercion, racism, historical trauma, colonization, oppression. And then I have been very honored to be part of two Native-led projects, both talking about working with health clinics and the other one talking about working with community providers. So I find that the significance of my experience has really been based on the people that I have served, that I have been honored to serve, to the victims of their courage and their strength has been always something that gives me courage to continue to be an advocate for the people. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Giachi. And I just want to say, I, as a young person walking into community organizing work, was immediately introduced to the legacy even back then. And when your commitment and passion for this work and that you have been so successful over the years to work directly with our communities, it's just a great, I'm so, I was so excited to see your name. Part of this, I think, is going to bring so much richness to this board. Thank you for committing your service and thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I just make one comment? I have a task for you as you start your job on the SORB. It's great to hear that you have worked with Mayor Keller because one of the things that I'm trying to get done is a signed agreement to release some public safety grant funding. The mayor said that he's waiting for a new sheriff to be sworn in. I don't think our community can wait for that public safety money. So I'd appreciate if the SORB could maybe try to work on that and get that money out into the community where it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Piscotti. We will move on to approval of minutes. I move to approve the Bay 24th, 2022 Administrative Meeting Minutes. Can I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Piscotti. All in favor, aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to item number eight, the approval of consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please issue resolution numbers for items 8A, E, F, G, and ordinance numbers for items A, C, and D.
Yes, ma'am. 8A is AR 2022-51. 8B, well, 8C, excuse me, is ordinance 2022-5. 8D is in David, ordinance 2022-6. F is AR 2022-52. I'm sorry, E is AR 2022-52. F is AR 2022-53. And G is AR 2022-54.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Piscotti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to item number nine, adoption of ordinance. And we have Director Marcos Gonzalez to present.
Thank you. Madam Chair and members of the commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends the adoption of an ordinance authorizing the Burnley County Commission to approve a project revenue bond application on behalf of Trailhead at Chamizal LLP. The ordinance approves the issuance of the bonds as well as the bond documents, indenture, lease agreement, and bond purchase agreement. Also note that a Tax Equalization Fiscal Responsibility Act, a Tefra hearing in accordance with the bond issuance was also held today and no comment was held. So with that, we stand for any questions. Also like to point out that Chad Reniker, the developer for the project, is also here tonight should you have any questions.
Thank you for being here. Is there any questions? Amazing. Thank you for always. We'll now convene a public, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. A public hearing before going to vote for ordinance number 22-51.
Madam Chair, there was nobody that signed up for this item and just real quick, it's AR 2022-51.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry.
No, it's.
It's ordinance 2022-7. Yeah.
Sorry, trying to get it together. Thank you for that correction. Thank you, Director. You have no questions. I move the, to, motion to approve project revenue bond for Trailhead at Chamizal. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You have a due pass. Thanks for being present and for your work here. As we move on to item 9B, we will now, Lucas, Director Lucas Defoya to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This is Lucas Defoya with the Planning Development Services Department. Coming back to you for the scrap tire ordinance motion, requesting a motion to adopt this ordinance. It was introduced in April and was out for public comment. We have not received any comments on this item. So we are ready to request this to be adopted. And there's also a second request to make a motion to approve the fee for this permit. This was initially, our department was charging a zoning permit fee, which we're just formalizing it through an administrative resolution request here. Are, is getting taken out of the zoning section and taken under our health protection section. So they're going to be doing those inspections of these scrap tire generator facilities if this gets approved tonight. So I, I have plenty to talk about on this ordinance if you would like to any details, but I gave a detailed presentation back in April. If you have any questions about it, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Director Defoya. Is there any questions from the commission? And we will now convene a public hearing before we go to vote. Julianne, is there anyone signed up?
Madam Chair, there was nobody that signed up for this item.
Okay, thank you. And I will, I forgot to ask Madam Clerk, but I think I'm going to try this. To, motion to adopt ordinance 2022-8.
Yes.
And A, and also to approve administrative resolution, AR 2022-55. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Great. Both motions passed. Thank you. Aye. Thank you, Director Defoya.
And for the next three items, our zoning administrator is going to be presenting these items.
Thank you. And we welcome Mr. Nick Hamm to present on items 9C.
Good evening, Commissioners. Nicholas Hamm, zoning administrator for Burnley County. Nice to see you all again. Three items for your consideration this evening. The first one, well, before I get into these, I just want to remind the commission of the notice process that gets us to here today. So for all of these proposed items, which would be zoning code amendments, we send them out to every single registered neighborhood association, their representatives that are registered with our neighborhood coordinator. Each of them gets a copy of these with a memory and them explaining the details of what the amendment is. We then convene a public hearing in front of your planning commission. I'm happy to report that all of these were approved with unanimous approval from the planning commission. And as far as the public input process goes, kind of shocking to report this, but no one said anything bad. So in my role, that's kind of unusual. A nice surprise, though. So with that, I'll get into the details. So item 9C is a request for introduction of a proposed zoning code amendment to allow for a secondary dwelling unit or a casita, some people might call it in our community. This amendment would allow the zoning administrator to consider as a conditional use, a secondary dwelling unit to be constructed on a property provided that it meets use-specific criteria. Those would include having a wastewater system that's acceptable, meeting a minimum lot size requirement, meeting setback distance requirements, being willing to record the terms with the county clerk, which is similar to our second kitchen conditional use request. This item was born out of the already adopted secondary dwelling unit that exists in the Los Tudanas Sector Plan. So it's been modeled after that. We've had some success with that. The current context of the world being that we have a housing crisis, construction costs are going up, mortgage rates are going up. We wanted to provide additional housing options for county residents. So this is something that we've been working on since about 2018. Obviously, the pandemic put that on the back burner, but happy to report that we've picked this work back up and we are very excited to move this forward with your blessing, of course. So that'll stand for any questions.
Yeah, Mr. Hamm, what areas of Burnley County do you expect this to affect the most?
Mr. Benson, I'm glad you asked that. So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, so the current draft details specific comp plan areas. Those would be semi-urban, developing urban, or established urban. What we're missing there is the rural area. So those would be the far reaches of the valley, the east mountain area, of course. I wrote this in sort of the conservative manner. I think that there would be benefits to allowing this to occur in other areas of the county, provided that we still maintain these use-specific criteria. And the conditional use process always, also affords me the ability to condition these things as they are appropriate within the community that they're applied for. So I can condition design requirements, sizes of structures, locations, things like that, to make sure that they're not causing adverse effects as the criteria in the zoning code calls for. So one of the things that I would ask the commission is that with the draft that's published, that we might consider removing criteria number three, which would be the comp plan designation, and then receive input from the community and let the commissioners think about that as they hear from their constituents. My understanding is we can always go back, but if we don't float that draft, we might lose that opportunity with the adoption as this might come back. So with your, with your blessing, of course, I would suggest that we remove the comp plan designation and afford this opportunity to all county residents.
Thank you. So I know North Albuquerque Acres has some different zoning restrictions and I've seen some casitas and would this affect that area as well?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, you're correct. Your, North Albuquerque Acres, part of your district, does have a separate sector development plan. That sector plan references the underlying A1 zone. So this would provide another opportunity for constituents in that particular area to apply for this at least. Casitas in that area now, in my opinion, there's a cumbersome process associated with that. You have to petition the county for a special use permit. That's quite an undertaking. We want to make this a more straightforward process. So you still have to go to a public hearing, but there's less intensive investment as far as consultants or time would go. And there's still the ability for the Planning and Development Services Department, me, if I'm serving as the zoning administrator, to consider these in isolation and condition them if they'd be appropriate.
Thank you.
I want to make sure I understand. The part, that this last part of the conversation and also your request around remove the confined designation, is this saying that this is allowing folks, right now, so this would allow folks to have those like casitas like we're talking about and possibly increase? But then outside, you're saying the far corners of some parts of the rural areas we're not reaching. So those folks are not allowed currently?
Commissioner, Madam Chair, that's correct. So what I'm asking is that we expand the opportunity here. So by removing the required comp plan designations that I have written in this current draft, we would be opening this up as an opportunity for more constituents in the county.
Okay, that, thank you.
Sorry if I said that weird.
No, I, I just need things a couple of times. Thank you. Any other?
Does this apply to permanent structures only?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, yes. The intent is for structures that you would get a building permit for. Part of the reason is that pre-manufactured structures, it takes out the ability of the zoning administrator and the building official to utilize the flexibility that we have within our adopted codes. So we're really trying to hone this in on those types of structures that you would get a building permit for.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the commission? I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You have a motion passed.
Thank you, Commissioners. All right. Item 9D, and just to reiterate for purpose of the record, that the notice process is the same. So these go out far and wide. There's a public hearing in front of the planning commission. This was also recommended for unanimous approval by the planning commission. This one's really straightforward. The county's zoning code generally allows, as you go up the tree, so to speak, you can do things in the lower zone. The exception currently is that when you get into our heavy industry and manufacturing zones, you miss the zone, the uses that are in the commercial, excuse me, the light industrial zone, CLI. That's a newer zone in the code. There are some more contemporary type uses, as I would describe them. What we're trying to do here is add the CLI uses into the M1 zone and thereby also the M2 zone, hopefully opening up some more opportunities for job creation and economic development that are things other than salvage yards or some of the other more intense uses that occur in those zones. So we're creating continuity that exists in other areas of the code and we're hoping to create other opportunities for property owners or users of the M-zone to do things that are not currently allowed today.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from commission?
Can you give other examples of CLI zone applications?
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, I'm going to be pulling from memory here, but one that really sticks out in my mind is like food processing uses. That's not something that you would be able to do currently in the M-zones, but that you would be able to if we rolled in the CLI zone. So CLI is kind of like a hybrid C1, M1, O1. It's really kind of a creative zone. Like I said, it's one of the newer zones that the county has adopted. So it's, it's less intense things in zoning parlance. It's also not allowing anything that would be more intense than what's currently allowed. So we wouldn't be changing the expectations of folks that live next to M1 beyond what the intensity would allow for currently today.
Okay, I move to approve items 9D.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Your motion 9D passes. On to 9E.
Thank you, Commissioners. All right. Last one for me. Item 9. Thank you, Commissioners. All right, last one for me. Uh, item nine E, this one is also, I would call exciting. This is a request for, uh, and for the record, same notice process, so all the neighbor associations, public hearing, unanimous approval from your planning commissioners. This is what we're calling the shared solar amendment. So, um, obviously, we're entering an era where renewable energy is an important part of, uh, modern society, and it's be, also becoming more affordable and accessible for people. So this amendment is intended to allow for a group of private property owners to come together and create their own small-scale solar facility. And it's limited to five properties. So say, for instance, myself and my three or four neighbors wanted to spend money on solar panels. We could aggregate our resources, pick a property that goes on, agree on some maintenance easements, and go get this thing done. Go get building permits from the county to do it. Currently, again, you'd have to petition the county for a special use permit that feels really cumbersome from our perspective. So we're trying to make this as straightforward and as least bureaucratic as we possibly can, um, while also recognizing that there are thresholds to this. So the small scale that we're talking about is much different than a large-scale P and M or utility-sized facility. Those would still have to go through a public hearing process. They'd still be considered by the planning commissioners. But this would, uh, free the individual resident or property owner to engage in commerce, if you will, with their neighbors to be able to develop a s, a solar facility that would meet their needs. So we'd be adding a definition. We'd also be adding this as a permissive use. So if it passes in its current form, people can walk straight up to the second floor and get a permit for this. But that'll stand for questions.
So it's like a well share?
Commissioner Benson, that is such a good example. Yes, it's exactly like that.
Great.
Thanks. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I think this is just such a great idea. It's so innovative. So, uh, I totally support this. I'll move for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Piscotti. I would just add, like, I, it, it's very exciting to think at what the potential for this is. So thank you for bringing it. And I'll second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, you have a motion passed.
Commissioners, thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Director and Mr. Nick. Wonderful. We're moving on to item ten, items ten, adoption revol, resolution. Madam Clerk, please issue resolution numbers for the, um, item number ten.
Yes, ma'am. Ten A is AR twenty twenty-two dash fifty-six. Ten B two is AR twenty twenty-two dash fifty-seven. Ten C is AR twenty twenty-two dash fifty-eight. And ten D, as in David, is AR twenty twenty-two dash fifty-nine.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have Chief Richard Clark to present. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, um, officials, I'm, I'm glad to be standing up. My name is Richard Clark. I'm, thank you, yes. My name is Richard Clark. I'm the, uh, county emergency manager. Uh, I've got next to me is, uh, Tom Wamsley, who's my deputy emergency manager for the county. Uh, what we, um, we're presenting to the Commission today is, is well overdue. When I came in here seven years ago, we had an emergency operation plan, which was dated two thousand and eleven. And, uh, it was a cookie cutter to check the block, to make sure we got funding. And so my, my goal, my mission was to, uh, get that in place. And of course, other things happened, Dog Head Fire in these mountains, the COVID-nineteen and other thi, uh, disasters that have happened within the county. And so throughout all of those, we determined that our emergency operation plan was not adequate enough to actually support the county. It didn't go down and dig deep to say, okay, here's exactly what every member of the county staff does to support the citizens of the, of Burnley County. And so we did, we went on a, a venture to rewrite it, and, um, it took us a long time. And so through many different drafts and, uh, and many different input from various partners, uh, to include the city and other, we came up with what we, what we think is a, a great document. This is the start, this is the base document to the, uh, to the emergency operation plan, which governs what we do as the county when it comes to dis, declaring disasters and, uh, and different types of other things that we do when it comes to addressing emergencies. So, uh, we would, uh, we'd really appreciate it. And in the past, we've had the support of the county commission and all leadership within the county and everything that we do. Um, we're kind of the unsung heroes that kind of sit behind the, the, you know, kind of move the, uh, move the, uh, the levers there behind the scenes, but, uh, you know, we, we are here to support the citizens. Uh, we are very honored and, and I, I, I want to say this, that the county has always stepped up and they continue to step up. The fires that happened in the north, um, as far as in, uh, in Hamas Springs and up as far as the, uh, up in Las Vegas area, we were called upon, I think, uh, the State Emergency Operations Center has us on speed dial. And so we were called to, uh, support with shelter traders. So we supported both Hamas Springs and, uh, Las Vegas. Um, our great public, um, our park and rec department, um, who've trained in running shelters, are, are supporting, um, Andre Xonperson. Um, he is running, or ran the shelter up at Glorietta for a while and helped support that. Um, our animal services department, uh, were able to, they, they called us in the middle of night, and I, we, Tom and I went up there at three o'clock in the morning and set up a tent to, to bring in dogs and pets because we know that when people evacuate, they won't, they won't leave their animals at home. And so we set up a, uh, animal shelter up there as well and, uh, had the FEMA Region Six Administrator come on and tour our site and was very impressive what we did. And that was our animal services department. And then finally, we were asked, uh, I'm sorry, not finally, but we were asked to support through our fire department structural protection engines to help protect structures within Las Vegas, um, so that if a fire burned towards Las Vegas or Taos, then they would be there to protect people's homes. And so we had a great turnout from our great fire department, um, within the county. And then finally, our public works department, we were asked to haul water, um, potable water and non-potable water to animals and, and help support in the firefighting efforts to fill up those dip tanks so they could come in and, and, and aircraft could come in and get water. And so the county has supported, we've always stood up, we've always supported. We are the, the, the largest program in the county, or excuse me, in, in the state when it comes to emergency management. And so we're very proud of that. And, and adopting this new emergency operation plan will help us to just even get better when it comes to disasters. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any comment or questions from Commission?
Yeah, I would just like to comment, um, first of all, thank you so much for your service. I know that you and the other departments you named, um, Burnley County Fire Department, Animal Care Services. I didn't know Public Works was up there, but go Public Works and Community Centers, that Burnley County has been working so hard. And, you know, like to say, we, we go where we're needed and we stay as long as it takes. So, um, I know that for, for my district, people have been asking about, you know, is there a plan if something happens in the foothills or in the mountains, um, in the forests? And I always reassure people that we have the best people working on it. And, um, by that, I mean you, Richard Clark, as well as other leaders in the county, other workers. So, um, I, I totally support you, and I know that, that you always just do the right thing for the people of Burnley County and the state. So thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Piscotti, thank you for those kind words. And, and it is a team effort. The county is probably one of the best places I've ever worked at, and, and everybody wants to volunteer, everyone wants to help, and they do such a great, fantastic job. And, and we're, we're just the, the people that, that orchestrated. We're, the, the county is just hands down probably one of the best places, and, and we're always willing to, to roll up our sleeves and help. So, so thank you very much for those comments.
Thank you for your service and work in this devastating moment. I'm so thankful that we have your all's leadership to be out there and supporting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, so I think we're supposed to pass something. Um, a motion to approve administrative resolution AR twenty twenty-two dash fifty-six.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Piscotti. Um, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. You have a motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
Item ten B, Fire and Rescue Deputy Chief Brian Rose to present.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Deputy Chief Brian Rose with Fire and Rescue. And I'm, uh, here to present you this evening with two items. Uh, the first is an open burning ban in the own incorp, sorry, unincorporated areas of Burnley County. The resolution before you outlines current conditions and provisions for the ban, uh, but at this time, I'd like to make a floor amendment. Uh, adding item C to page two, line six as follows. Uh, closure of all east mountain open spaces, including but not limited to Carlito Springs for the duration of the, uh, open burning ban. Um, as we all know, Burnley County is in extreme, uh, drought conditions, according to the National Drought Mitigation Center, NOAA, and the U.S. Department of Agri, Agriculture. This ban will help prevent and protect and ensure the safety of the citizens, first responders, and visitors of Burnley County to the devastating effects of wildland fires. Um, and as we know, uh, the Sandia Ranger District is currently in stage three restrictions of forest closures. So this would really just tie into what's already in place to help protect, um, our precious resources and the people of Burnley County.
Thank you so much. Yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, I have a comment because it does affect my district in the east mountains, and it's heartbreaking to me. It's so sad because we love our open spaces so much, and yet I understand that, you know, it would be the closure of the open spaces that abut the national forest, the Forest Service land. And so it makes sense to close those open spaces. And, you know, it's also my understanding that if we get, uh, by some miracle, let's, let's pray for rain. Um, if we get a good monsoon season, those open spaces could be reopened sooner rather than later. But as a resident myself of the east mountains and listening to feedback from other residents, you know, we know firsthand that those, it's so dry out there. Those trees are just turning brown out there in the forests, and, um, with the, the hot windy, dry weather we've been having, it's unfortunate. But, um, I, I'm willing to support the closure of our, our open spaces that abut the forests. Um, also because I, I know that, yeah, our, our firefighters, our first responders, our personnel are stretched thin because there are crews still battling the fires up north and in various places. So I, I do not want to put an extra burden on our firefighters, um, by having that risk of having a forest fire, you know, especially one that would start in our open space. That would be very tragic. So, you know, as sad as, as it is, I do support this, and so I'll move for approval.
Sorry, Madam Chair, if we can have a vote on the amendment and then a vote on the item total.
Okay, yes, thank you, Julianne. I can move to approve the amendment? Or did you want to do the amendment?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So I guess I will move to approve the amen, uh, the amendment or?
The amendment as stated, yes.
As stated.
I can second that. Thank you. Um, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Amendment passes, and, um, thanks for mentioning the importance of, and thank you, Julianne. Um, but Commissioner Piscotti, and thank you for making that amendment. I think, um, as much as I enjoy someone that lives in the city to go out and enjoy our, our open spaces, I, we have to preserve them and protect them. So thank you.
This fire network destroying around sixteen homes and charring sixty-four vehicles. This could have been easily avoided if you had properly disposed of and put out his cigarette. Some ways that this could be avoided are by simple changes in the disposal of cigarettes and cigarette butts, such as using your car's ashtray or even installing one. Ways in which we can try to help and avoid causing any more damage with cigarettes, or being sure that our cigarette ashes are no longer hot. If you want to help sustain our environment and stop this from happening, please keep your butts in the window.
Can you tell us a little bit about this assignment to make a PSA and how you decided to do this topic?
In class, what we had to do was that we had to find a topic or problem in the world that we found, uh, needed to be addressed. Something that could be as simple as, well, not as simple, something as big as like out littering or anything, really. And when I started the project, I started like brainstorming things and trying to figure out like what I thought would be good. And once I got to like stuff that involved fire and fire safety, the thought of like how bad cigarettes were came to my mind. And how bad, um, how bad they have on, how bad the effect they have on the environment is. And how littering one can just like completely mess up an environment or like anything. So I'm kind of nervous.
If I can do it, you can do it.
And once I started researching and I saw how bad they were, and I realized that how little people talk about this and how like, um, how bad the effects are, and yet nothing is being done, well, very little is. I felt that this was definitely a worthy cause that I would, could put together to show the people.
Yeah, I agree with you, and it's so frustrating to me when I'm driving, like especially at night when somebody throws a cigarette butt out the window and you see the ashes, you know, the red embers just kind of, you know, split apart and go everywhere. It's so dangerous. Oh, I see another sibling has showed up. Hi, Robin.
She's the one in the.
And you were in the car. You were the actress in the car. Good to see you. So, Robin, do you want to talk a little bit about, you, in the video, you threw that cigarette out. I know it wasn't lit. But do you want to say a little something about fire safety and not throwing your butts out?
Um, I mean, I guess just, all I have to say is just be careful with like what you're doing, like with your stuff. If you're choosing to make that decision, like at least make like a safe choice with what you're doing. Like, put it out like in a s, in an ashtray or like in a cup of water or something, but just where it can't hurt anybody else. You know, so just be careful with your decisions.
Yeah, because I heard in that video about the driver who threw the cigarette butt out the window and burned. I don't, I don't remember but how many acres and just how much damage that caused. And with the dry grass and everything that's out there now.
Acres he destroyed.
How many?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
One decision caused ten thousand acres of damage. That's quite a bit, so.
I certainly appreciate your work on this. It's a beautiful video. It's very well done. I hope that it gets a lot of exposure on social media or wherever it goes. I love it. So thank you.
I want to agree, uh, very well done with the video production, and, uh, so much-needed PSA. Maybe you can create a PSA for controlled burns, too, because that's, that's kind of been a problem, uh, more recently. So, uh, yeah, do one of those next, and we'll, we'll put that on the air, too. Thank you, thank you all. Well done.
I'd also like to thank you guys so much for letting us be here.
Thank you, you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
No, thank you. Your leadership is incredible. I learned a lot just in that short video. I didn't know the toxins and the amount, so I learned a lot. Thank you.
I hope you got an A on the project.
Well, I presented it today, so we'll find out later.
I think you're good.
Thank you so much.
And Commission, we'll just make sure that goes up on the fire department website also in public, in our social media forums. Thank you.
Wonderful. We'll move to item ten D, Technical Services. Um, Richard Meadows to present, and Brian Lopez.
Good evening. No pressure to, after following that PSA, right?
You better bring it.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, uh, good evening. Um, we'd like to take this opportunity to present our technical services item for the El Camino Real de Tierra Adentro National Historic Trail Development Concept Plan. Say that a few times. This project's a grant-related project, uh, with National Park Service, uh, funding. Uh, Richard Meadows is our technical services planning manager. Uh, he's been working on this portion of the project for about two years, and this also involves the city of Albuquerque and the village of Los Rancho. Uh, for this item, we're requesting that the, uh, Commission approve the administrative resolution for this development, uh, concept plan. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to, uh, Richard Meadows and our consultants so they can, uh, give you a brief, uh, presentation, and, uh, we'll, we'll stand for any questions.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, I'm Richard Meadows with Technical Services, and we just wanted, um, ask you tonight to adopt our development concept plan for the National Historic Trail El Camino Real, and, uh, and the recommendations that are in it. Um, I have Aaron Zom with MRWM, who, um, we have a short presentation that we'd like to share with you. And, um, I'm not seeing it. Is it on here or?
Yeah, it should be pulled up at the bottom there. If not, it's on the desktop.
There it is. There it is. Slideshow. Uh, thank you. Full screen.
Thanks, Richard. Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for hearing us this evening and letting us present this project to you. Apologies for me reading from a script. It's a 400-page document and we only have a couple of minutes to tell you about a very important and long project. So I'm going to read from this if that's okay. So our team recently published 100% draft development concept plan for El Camino Real de Tierra Adentro National Historic Trail. I'm here tonight to give you a brief, very high-level overview of the project as the public review period comes to an end and we prepare for publishing the final document. The development concept plan provides a vision for the preservation and development of a retracement trail following portions of the Camino that are located within Burnaleo County, city of Albuquerque, and the village of Los Rancho. And I'll abbreviate the trail as NHT in our presentation tonight. The plan identifies strategic actions, development projects, and infrastructure improvements needed to create a multimodal path that follows El Camino Real and HT as closely as possible. The goal is to create a continuous path for pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles. The projects identified within the plan are intended to contribute towards tourism, economic development, and cultural preservation while paying special attention to the equitable development of community infrastructure. The plan includes guidelines and recommendations for the retracement trail, a list of specific amenities and guidelines for branding, materiality, and design elements to make the trail more visible, distinct, and relevant for visitors. The project team engaged the public during the summers of 2020 and 2021. A variety of engagement formats and tools were used to comply with COVID-19 regulations in place at the time. You can see a summary of those efforts on the screen as well as other jurisdictional partners with whom we met. For planning purposes, the NHT was broken into three sections, North Valley, Central, and South Valley. Within the North Valley and South Valley sections, another division is made between east and west parallel routes to safely accommodate all users, cyclists, pedestrians, and vehicles. More than one route is recommended in some locations. The NHT covers approximately 22 miles on either side of the Rio Grande within Burnaleo County. It's a braid of routes that shifted up and down the valley with ever-changing path of the Rio Grande. The historic trail is shown as a dashed brown line, if you can see that on the graphic on the screen. The prevailing public opinion was to prioritize locating the retracement trail as close to the NHT as possible. In addition, criteria such as connections to historic trail sites, public spaces, and quality of recreational and educational value were also used to identify the preferred route location of the retracement trail. There are several priority projects that are identified in the plan and they're prioritized for a variety of reasons, including the list that's shown on the screen. Note the numerous county priority projects that are highlighted in blue on the right. And some of these include interpretation and amenities at Attrisco Asequi Amadre, Vía de Oro National Wildlife Refuge, and Sandia Ranch. Bike and pedestrian improvements and branding and signage along the Alameda Drain Trail and Isleta Boulevard, and future trail improvements such as the Attrisco Riverside Drain and the Dolores Huerta or Bridge Boulevard pedestrian bridge over the river. The National Park Service and the BLM have identified five high potential historic sites along the NHT within the project limits. And these are historic villages or prajes that connected, that were connected by the NHT. And four of the five are within unincorporated portions of the county. In addition, two sites in the county, Gutierrez Hubble House and Estancia de los Saramillo have already been certified by the MPS. So this is important because these sites are more likely to receive MPS funding partnerships. A variety of trail amenities are proposed along the retracement trail to provide features that attract users, educate and encourage them to stay on the trail, and reflect the unique cultures and communities through which the trail passes. These vary in scale from simple rest stops with a bench and a sign to linear parks and plazas that can accommodate larger gatherings and events. The proposed retracement trail traverses a wide range of landscapes from bustling urban areas in the heart of the city to scenic rural areas in the north and south valleys. It travels along busy arterial streets, narrow rural roads, and at times along drainage facilities. The retracement trail utilizes existing bike lanes, sidewalks, and multi-use trails where possible. And on some roadways, a reconfiguration of the existing right-of-way is required to accommodate the trail. When complete, the NHT will be the only continuous north-south multi-use trail that extends from one end of the county limits to the other. Along its path, there are important connections to other existing trails and transit facilities that will enhance multimodal connectivity within the county. And the plan identifies existing and potential lateral trails that will connect east and west retracement trail sections. As a National Historic Trail administered by the National Park Service Trails Office, the NHT has a unique logo and signage standards that are already in use along portions of its length. You've probably seen some of these. These standards ensure that each trail segment reads as part of a larger trail that runs throughout the entire state of New Mexico. But for the county, we've created unique identity and trail branding that's been created as part of this plan for use along the retracement trail through the county, and the two will be used together. The planned document includes preliminary project costs that are summarized by project segment, priority, jurisdiction, project partner, plan section, and improvement type. Costs shown in the summary table include both bike and pedestrian facility improvements and amenities and wayfinding improvements. Okay, went through that very fast. So the 100% draft development concept plan document has been available for viewing and comment on the project website, which is camino-bernco.com for the past two months. After tonight, a final presentation will be made to the Albuquerque City Council on June 6th. And we anticipate that it will also be formally adopted by the council on June 22nd. So with that, I will happily answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this presentation. Any questions or comments from commissioners? I had a quick question. I saw that you had engaged with Sandia and Isleta Pueblo. Was there any recommendations or other ways that we made sure to check in with indigenous folks around? Representation, modeling?
Yes, thanks for the question, Madam Chair. We, and Richard can, maybe you want to give more details?
Well, we did at the beginning of our process, and of course, it was very difficult during COVID to do as much outreach as we would have liked. But we did send a letter from our county manager to both Pueblos asking them to provide input. We did talk to some of the staff at both Pueblos. We got most input from Sandia Pueblo, not so much from Isleta Pueblo. And basically, they said they did not want to participate in the trail itself and to make sure that we did not extend within their boundaries. So we did respect that in the plan. We stopped before we get to their boundaries. We also asked if they had any input about the story that the trail is telling because certainly there is a mixed history of how this area was settled. And I think we will engage more when we actually create the interpretive signage that goes along the trail. And National Park Service would help with that to tell their story so that it's not one-sided. And anyway, that's what we did. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for doing that work. And are you saying that there's still opportunity to engage? Okay. And I would love, there's a whole population and actually organized communities of urban Native Americans, right? That this might be appropriate to reach out to just because it is part of, it's off tribal lands, but still addressing, like you said, a history. So thank you. I think it's beautiful. I love the signage. And yeah, thank you for this great work and engaging community. Is there any other comments, questions? I move to approve. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I have a motion.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we move on to item number 11, approvals. Office of Community Engagement and Outreach, I believe Kent Swanson to present.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Kent Swanson, Public Art Project Coordinator, Burnaleo County. This is an item for your consideration, a donation of artwork by artist Alan Payne Ridenbaugh. And this is an established artist from Burnaleo County who has, currently has work in our public art collection. And he has generously offered to donate a triptych of work, a triptych of paintings that were completed in 2002 during an artist's presidency in Canada. And this, these are pieces that are valued at approximately $17,000. And these were unanimously approved for recommendation to the commission during the March 2020 Public Art, the Arts Board meeting. And so these works are, would be a really wonderful addition to the public art collection. And there, we did a review of the size and the scope of the works to make sure that they're appropriate, there are appropriate spaces for installation. And so there are several locations that we've identified that would be appropriate. And with that, again, there's no real implications on the finances for the county other than occasional maintenance, if ever. So with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Any comment? I'd just like to learn a little bit about how this works. So this person donated, thankfully, and now you all have found a few places where it could be publicly displayed. But obviously to install that, some of that comes out of the one person. Is that, that's all?
Right, our administrative fees, which, or administrative budget, which, yeah, that's budgeted, that's programmed in for installation and maintenance.
And then the art board approved, I guess, the acceptance of a donation.
Correct, yeah, to recommend to the commission that it be accepted into the collection, so.
Great, thank you for answering.
Madam Chair, I guess I do have a comment. When I look through the agenda packets, whenever you have items, I love to look at the art and it's always just so different. And we have such a variety of art and artists. And when I saw this, I was like, wow, that's really different. So I think it's going to be a great addition. And, yeah, just kind of scrolling through the agenda packet and seeing each individual piece, and then the triptych, it was like, wow, that's fascinating. I love that. So, yeah, good, good deal.
Thank you, Commissioner Piscotti.
Thank you. I move to approve, if I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I have a motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thanks for your patience through this evening. And we will now announce the next commission meeting. Will be on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, the zoning meeting at 3:00 PM here in Ken Sanchez Chambers. And Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, is the next administrative meeting at 5:00 PM, also here in Ken Sanchez Chambers. And if there is no other business, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.